Everybody here, but it's great to see some folks I haven't seen in a long time. So, welcome. I'm glad you're here and I'm certainly glad that those who feel comfortable wearing a mask are wearing one because I certainly wear one a lot of places I go. So, you know, it's pretty cool. So, good. Okay, so, we are going to begin the July 21st Town Council meeting. I will let the record read that the entire Town Council is present. At this, the entire Town Council was present. Mr. Morris is up there?
No.
Yes, he, he, you can probably guess why he's not here. Okay, so we'll start, we'll, we'll let Councilman Fink lead us with the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point in time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Please come forth and give us your name and your, and your address. This, this is your turn. I believe, and hey, listen, you know, we're always here to help first timers. I, I believe you wanted to have, make a comment on the Bayview presentation, the ferry.
Yeah.
Okay, then this would be the time to make a comment if you, if you choose to. If you want, want to come up and make a comment, that'd be great. If you, if you don't mind, sir, you can come up to the, the podium here.
Right over here.
And when you're done, could you put a $10 bill up there? It's sort of a first timer fee?
You got it. Yeah.
Okay, sir.
I, I gave you 20 there, so I, I get more than one save, right?
Thank you. Okay, give us your name and address, please.
Okay, James Shepherd, 3929 Old Bayside Road.
Very well. And your comments, sir?
Yes, I have been interested in seeing projects like a ferry going across the bay, happening for a while now. But the problem that I see the most is infrastructure, getting the cars to the ferry and, you know, across, and there's a big parking lot. I've been on many ferries and there, there's always a big parking lot and you have a lot of cars going back and forth. So, it would be good to have the infrastructure, the roadways in place to support that.
I, I agree. Thank you. And, and if you stick around for the, the presentation, I think your questions will be answered.
Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment? Yes, young lady. I feel like my whole neighborhood's here. I feel like my whole neighborhood's here. Now, your mother's watching, so be careful now.
Okay. All right. My name is Tammy Will Hoyt. I reside at 7531 C Street. And I don't have a comment yet on the Bayways presentation because that's why I'm here, to learn about it so that I can intelligently think about it and, and decide what my comment should be to the town so that they will take that into consideration with everything, just like they do. I wanted to come up here because I wanted to tell the Town Council that I am most grateful that you all give us the opportunity to provide comment and you keep us informed of what's going on. And I'm very proud of our town, the way it does that. And I just think they ought to be doing that nationally for the presidential stuff too. So, anyway, it's just really nice to be invited to comment on the things going in the town rather than just relying on somebody else to make the decisions for us. So, thank you.
And thank you. We have found that open communication is the best way to run a town and I think, you know, we've, we've done a good job with that. So, thank you. It helps. Yes, sir?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Nate Pope. I live at 8105 Turkish Trail Knowings. My comment is, I took a look at the advanced copy of this, of the slide and my comment is that I think it's a great idea. I think it's something to look forward, forward to for this, this area. My only comment would be that I hope that the city and the cities involved take the maintaining of the passageway or the channel for the vessel to go in and out very seriously at all times and don't rely on anyone else to take care of it. You know, work on how you want to work that out, but just make sure that the, the channel is always available and clear for the, the vessel if you decide to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was fun. Next, okay, approval of the minutes of the June 9th Town Council meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the, the minutes of the July 11th informational work session?
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And, and lastly, approval of the minutes of the July 11th closed, closed session?
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the ayes have it. So, next we have a, a special presentation from Hillary Daley on the Bayways Crossing feasibility presentation. I, before I asked Hillary to step up, I just wanted to, you know, share something with, with the town since I was probably the first one that, you know, was contacted on this. It's important that, that we realize that this is just a feasibility study, that there's no commitment on the town's part whatsoever. But, you know, when I heard about it, you know, the reason I thought it was exciting was because it gives us the opportunity to participate in the feasibility study. If, if you don't participate, you don't find out what's going on or if it sounds, if it, if it'll work out for you. So, I asked Hillary to come here and provide a presentation so we can inform our citizens and, and, and hear from our citizens as well as hear from the Town Council. In advance to this presentation and meeting, okay, I asked the Town Administrator to try to get some sort of public opinion on this, you know, like a little, you know, survey thing. And I think we were quite surprised and happy with the, the results, but I'll let, I'll let Holly speak to the, the survey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the Bayways public comment input, we had, the total public comments received were 91 public comment submissions. Two were unfortunately not fully completed, so we have 89 full responses. The question is, do you think that the town of Chesapeake Beach should be included in the feasibility study of the Bayways Ferry project? And across the, the entire submission, 83% said they strongly agree and 12% said they strongly disagree. Of those comments, 79 were town citizens. And it's pretty consistent, the response there as well, 87% strongly agree and 12% strongly disagree.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. At this time, I'll ask Hillary if she wants to step up.
So, good evening. My name is Hillary Daley. I'm the Tourism Specialist for Calvert County. I've been tagged to present this opportunity to you tonight, a destination assessment study for a hypothetical future Chesapeake Bay ferry system.
Is, is the microphone turned on?
It's turned on. Am I close enough? Is this better? The ultimate goal of this initiative would be a 40 to 50 person passenger ferry system with no cars on the board that would loop around the bay with stops in several counties that encircle the bay. This passenger ferry system would enhance public access for residents and tourists all around the bay and would further develop and connect existing water trails and attractions, including the Greater Chesapeake Loop. The concept is for a passenger ferry instead of a car carrying ferry because this would not be a means to get to Ocean City faster. It would be a way to explore and connect the people and places that actually touch the Chesapeake Bay. So, who would or could ride this ferry? For example, someone could get down, get on this ferry at the eastern shore at Somerset County at a stop or access point, which Somerset's County, for those who don't know, is right across the bay from us, ride the ferry over to Calvert County, spend money on dinner, ice cream, stay overnight, and then ride back the next day. And that would mean they would leave their money here. Another example is I could get on the ferry in Calvert County, ride over to an access point in Somerset County, rent a golf court, tour around, get lunch, do some bird watching, have a nice day and come back. So, what is a passenger ferry access point? It is essentially where people would get on and off a ferry, vessel of some sort, which is still to be determined. So, where are we in this initiative? So far, the Ferry Feasibility Committee is, which is made up of individuals from various county governments that touch the bay, have applied for an Economic Development Administration Technical Assistant Grant, which was $250,000. This grant request is for a passenger ferry feasibility study, meaning like, would a ferry system even work? What kind of boats do you need? What companies could do it? The results of this study would give the region the framework it needs to understand capital investment, operational considerations, key routes, available vessel technology, and look into ferry companies that could support the initiative. This first grant is, has been submitted and is currently under review. So, what we're talking about tonight is the second one, which is an Economic Development Administration Maryland State Tourism Grant or Grants. This grant is being coordinated and pursued by 16 Maryland counties working together. This one is, the money would go towards what locations could be studied around the bay that might make good stops. The submission goal for the grant application is August 20th and visit Annapolis would serve as the fiduciary should the grant be awarded. And a memorandum of understanding would be drafted between the participating 16 counties. This grant request may be divided into requests organized by geographic groups, which I'll get to in a minute. And there's no matching funds needed, meaning like, nobody has to put any money in towards this request. So, these are the geographic groupings around the bay I just mentioned. There are, these are the various counties that are interested in this study and are working together for it, in this Ferry Feasibility Committee. Since this presentation was created, Caroline and Charles Counties have also joined in. And so, the groupings have changed slightly, but it's basically what you see here. The reason the counties are divided into geographic groupings is to be able to apply for the most money for this project. Each geographic group could apply for a grant versus one grant request from all the counties together since there is a cap on the amount you can apply for. So, in total, all of these counties together are looking to probably try to get awarded about $1 million for this idea. So, this brings me to, why am I here tonight? I'm here to hear from the town of Chesapeake Beach if they would like to throw their hat in the ring to possibly get the nod to be studied as a potential ferry stop. I've been tasked to bring your decision back to this Ferry Feasibility Committee. The town of North Beach had their presentation last week and they decided, yes, they would like to be considered for the study. And Solomon's is also being looked at because there are several docs down there that could work for it, we think. At this point, the Ferry Feasibility Committee is seeking approval to submit potential locations into the current grant application as a location to be considered for study. So, even if you decide to be considered, you might not be selected by the feasibility consultant. And I'll tell you why. Because all of these counties, plus Caroline and Charles County are submitting lots of potential ferry stops for a feasibility consultant to consider. From there, if the grants are awarded, it could go two ways. One, the feasibility consultant looks at the list of locations, decides a particular location just isn't worth making a trip out to at all, and that's it, you're done. Or, the feasibility consultant does pick the location as a study point, travels to that area, checks it out, takes measurements, do whatever they do, and then writes a report about that location and what they might need to do to become a ferry stop. And at that point, the location can still decide, no thanks, we're not interested. So, what information is needed to submit a location? If you decide you'd like to be considered, you would need to pick an area or dock in the town. And I would take this information back to the Ferry Feasibility Committee and ask them to add this information that's on this slide to the grant application with all the other potential study points. So, here's a couple examples of study points that have already been submitted. Again, the grant has not been submitted. This is just everybody collecting areas that they think might be good spots to have a ferry come up to. So, this is Kent County. And remembering the information needed from the previous slide, it has the county, eastern neck island, the GPS coordinates of that area, a little bit about that area, what you can do there that's fun, and then what are potential infrastructure needs that might need to be done still to make it a viable ferry stop. And you can see this has quite a few things that still would need to be looked at before even considering. And then here's another example, Annapolis is definitely submitting city doc, GPS coordinates of it, where it is, what's there, and then infrastructure needs that still need to be considered. So, next steps for Calvert County. If Chesapeake Beach decides to throw their hat in the ring to potentially be a pace, a place for the feasibility consultant to consider and look at, great. Remember, you can still say no down the line if it goes any further, or if you decide not at all, that's totally fine, too. Next, a grant application for a ferry stop feasibility study would be submitted in August 20th. And then, future grants are expected for the infrastructure building, building at the various stops. So, with that, I thank you and I say, what do you think?
Very good. Well, I was, I'm going to ask the council to share what they think, starting with Peggy, but first I'm just going to share, share my thoughts right now, which are basically, thank you for answering the questions that I, I, I had and I think were asked here. It's, it's not a car ferry. So, there's not, that's just, you know, to be clear. And we, you know, and we're only being asked, we, the town are only being asked to participate in a, a feasibility study, you know, no commitment.
No commitment whatsoever.
We can opt out at any, any time.
Anytime, yep.
And, and also I think what, what is important that you, you told me is that we will be able, we, we will be participating, you know, when appropriate in the feasibility.
Yes, this is not just a higher government level thing that's going on.
And I look forward to.
Everybody will be included, yep.
To, to participating. So, yes, that's it. I'll begin with Peggy and work my way around the horn.
Well, welcome, Hillary. And this is very exciting. I mean, the idea of getting to go around the bay right from here is fantastic. I have a couple questions on when, if we choose yes. When do we have to give you our little bit of GPS coordinates and information?
Um, pretty soon, only because the application is due August 20th and a lot of the counties have already submitted their locations that they want.
Sure. Um, but like, when?
Well, if, if I can help you there, we're going to make a decision this evening.
Well, we'll make a decision, but when do we have to give the information, the GPS coordinates and get them right up together?
We had a meeting today, I was sitting on a meeting today and they were hoping to get all the locations in in the next two weeks. So, whatever, not this coming Thursday, but next Thursday, two Thursdays away is when they'd like them all to be.
Thank you. And would it be possible, if we put it together, to have a twin beaches submission? I know North Beach said yes. And if Chesapeake Beach says yes, and the towns decide to work together, is it possible to do a twin beaches?
I think further down the line that would be. I think that right now they're mainly looking for the actual location, like a really, because the GPS coordinate is a dot on the map, I think is what they're thinking. But yeah, coordination would be great.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a really interesting idea and I look forward to learning more and for the town participating. So, yeah, thanks. Are you on the call, Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir. Can everybody hear me okay?
Hear you well. Thank you.
Great. I did want to appreciate, I wanted to throw a thanks to Holly and staff for setting this up for me, me suffering through my isolation here. But Hillary, welcome. Sorry I'm not there to meet you in person. The Bayways Project, I love this idea for our town. It's not your typical ferry. And it's, it, it seems as though either North Beach or, or the town of Chesapeake Beach would be selected, maybe both. I do like Hillary's idea, I mean, I'm sorry, Peggy's idea of a co-join thing. I'm not really sure how that would work, but that's not a bad angle there. And if that's long-term, that's fine. Just a couple observations. Again, I love the idea. I think it's a fantastic feature on the bay here and, and a fantastic partnership among bay counties. You know, we certainly want a location to park with an easy access to the ferry with a good docking point, of course. It, it seems that it would be prudent in the feasibility study to project the ferry out to sustain itself for, you know, at least a three-year minimum. It could be a long circuit around the bay. I, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily envision this as being, you know, every hour that the ferry's coming by. And on that, the development of timing and reliable arrival and departure times is going to be very important, you know, to make this some effective for users and dependable. Last but not least here, certainly have, I don't know how my colleagues or the mayor feel about this, but, you know, the rod and rails got a lot of parking there. It kind of seems like a natural fit there. I know that's a private area there and maybe there's some MOU that could be developed there. But I'm certainly open to development of alternative town locations. So, appreciate you coming up today. And welcome to Town Hall here. And we look forward to seeing the development of this plan.
Thank you.
Greg? I asked the, the town attorney, is there anything legal that you need to ask or wait on or?
No, not at all. This, this idea, that's a feasibility study and I think it's important for the council to decide and certainly get more information about this potential economic impact. So, this is absolutely strictly something for the council to consider.
Thank you.
Hi, Hillary. It's good to see you as always. I'm very excited about this. It just resonated so well, thinking back to the history of our town. We've seen pictures as you walk around, you can see pictures of what used to be a ferry coming from Baltimore, bringing people down here. Admittedly, it was a mile-long pier, which we don't envision as part of this plan, but it would fit well from an economic development point of view in terms of bringing people to town. You know, we're always looking for ways to get people to come into town and look around and say, wow, that's a, that's a really cool place. I want to come back there and do some more from an economic development point of view. So, I think that would fit quite well. Some specific questions. Any ideas? How would this run? Meaning, is it a one-time-a-day thing? Is it a couple trips during the day? Do we know yet? Or is that too soon?
No idea. It's quite obvious to me, this is my opinion, one a day is not going to work.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Because you'll get stopped somewhere.
People could get off.
Yeah. So, that's part of the, the grant that was mentioned, the first grant, which is the actual ferry feasibility study. Is a ferry feasible? If so, what kind of vessels do they need? How many vessels? Timing? Is there, are there companies out there that do this already that are willing to do this? And if that first grant turns out to be a dud, then this is a moot point. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And looking at things like, would this be a seasonal ferry, you know, during the spring, summer times?
Yeah, all that is part of the first.
All those things could be looked at as part of the feasibility study.
Yeah.
One of the things, of course, looking at access, my understanding from listening in on the North Beach presentation by Ms. Olberg, we're looking at probably a six-foot draft boat.
That seems to be the idea of how much water would be needed for a regular vessel. However, I asked that question too because I knew that before Northeast Beach's presentation, I asked this feasibility committee. And they said, well, that's when they said vessels. So, there could be something that could be maybe with lower levels of water, but sixteen seems to be the.
Yeah.
What they're using.
We would have to work that out. And I think we can, certainly with the access we have already from the charter boats. You mentioned the feasibility committee. Who makes that up? Who's on that?
It's, it's people who are in the county governments. So, it's like the economic development directors and planning and zoning people and tourism directors. And basically just people who are interested in this project right now. And it's every time that, it's a virtual meeting every Thursday. And every time that I've gotten on it, there's more and more little squares of people. So, it's, it's whoever in county government is interested in, and interested in.
And just one last suggestion. It might be good to just get the opinion of the county Economic Development Advisory Commission on this as well. Send them an email. If you need help, I happen to know the chair.
Yeah.
He's a little short fellow from Chicago, right?
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. I, I was thrilled when I saw this paper version. So, I'm, you know, I, I won't shock anyone to think I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of this, certainly in concept. The one point I was going to raise, and I, I'm not an expert nautically by any stretch, but I was going to raise the, the notion of draft. I mean, I don't, we, we can say whatever we want. There, there's really only two places a boat can tie off within close, you know, close distance, Harrington South and, and the channel that, that comes into where the charter boats go. So, in the absence of that, you know, we're not going to build another mile-long pier out over the bay. Seems to me that's pretty important. I have two, just, I don't know if they're suggestions or just observations, very short. And this will also shock absolutely no one who knows me. Whatever the ferry supports, people should be able to walk on them with bikes. You know, you're, you're basically doing something here to get people out of their cars. That's awesome. I know if I was using the ferry, it would be pretty cool to be able to, to walk onto the ferry with my bike, get off at one of these other access points and pedal around and that all over Talbot County for sure. So, that, that'd be kind of neat.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, have you thought at all, has, has anyone talked at all about some of the places that are sort of hard to get to, like Smith Island or Tangier Island? And having ferry stops there? I don't know if that's part of what you're doing.
I don't know all the places that have been submitted by the other counties. But I do know that there are some that, like Charles County is interested in. They're not on the bay. But they are, there's like tributaries that go off and they're suggesting that some sort of boat could get off into them. So, maybe harder places are an option. I don't know yet.
Interesting. Well, I'll be very interesting, very interested to follow this as it goes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
A lot of the questions are similar to what I had. And so, I can see the multiplier effect from an economic development perspective, and I think it's really positive with a low impact. And that's wonderful. I was wondering about the cycle also. And when I said, I say a cycle, I mean going once around the bay.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask, if the thought was to have multiple ferries because I don't know how long that would take to do the route that was mapped, but that would be lengthy.
It would be lengthy, yes.
And so, people would have to almost make it like a mini holiday and plan on spending time. And that's why I was wondering, the number of ferries through the number per day. But, and I know it's a feasibility study and who knows?
Right.
And you explained that very well.
Yeah.
So, I can, I could see someone getting off and going to the restaurants, going to the water park, going to the railway trail, taking in a Bucks football game. There's just many opportunities for, just to get out and about. Walk down to North Beach, do that boardwalk. There's, there's a nice grouping of things that could occur here, I, I think. And I like that idea of coordinating with North Beach also, when it gets to that point. We, one question that hasn't been answered or asked, and it might be too early, is there any thought of how much this would cost? Like, per person, like I get on the ferry?
Oh.
No thought?
No idea. No. And I don't, I don't know. It would definitely, their, their thoughts are that it would be a private company. It would not be something supported by the government or supported by the public. It would be a private company that did it. I don't know that that, again, I don't know, but.
Way too premature to ask that question. But, you know, based on what you've been saying, it's like, is anybody, first of all, interested in this? And then, you know, take it from there, kind of.
Right, yeah.
I, I understand that. I also understand the concerns and one of our residents brought it up regarding dredging. Because right now, we basically rely on the Corps of Engineers to dredge Fishing Creek. But it doesn't mean that, you know, there's been ideas previously about, like, the town purchasing, like a mini dredge so that we can dredge more continuously. So, it's not, you know, it's just something that, as it moves along, we could figure out clever ways to address some of the issues. And then, we're far and away from having to agree to any sort of funding for anything or infrastructure improvements or anything like that. It's just throwing our hat and seeing what happens, providing GPS coordinates where it could potentially happen. And is there anything that would preclude us from creating a town business partnerships, thinking specifically of the Chesapeake Beach Spine Resort? Is there anything that would preclude us from, from eventually doing that, from your perspective?
I don't think so. I think that it's kind of so open right now. It's just sort of like wherever you think would be a good place and whoever is interested in being involved in the project, I think.
Yeah, because that's quite a complex over there and it's growing. And so, there will be opportunities to. And so there will be opportunities to, you know, partake of what all they have to offer too. So, you know, that could potentially be a docking place if they can see an economic benefit also. Basically, that was all I had. I think it's a great idea to pursue and see where it goes and good luck.
Hillary, I want to thank you for, for, you know, honoring our request to come out and give us a, a presentation. If you don't mind, you can just, you know, stay right there. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion from the council to authorize the mayor to enlist Chesapeake Beach as a site to be considered in this feasibility study.
I'm moved.
Second.
She whiz, I wonder how this one's going to end up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Thank you for taking your time.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay. That was good. Okay, so we've read the town administrator's report. If we have any questions, I, I usually ask colleagues, are there anything that stands out that you want to share with the, with the town?
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually not in my report, but I did want to thank Carla and Philo at the water park and Jay for all of their work with the electrical issue at the water park this past week.
Indeed. It's great to have such wonderful employees and it's sad to lose wonderful employees. I just thought I'd put that out there, Connie. Okey-dokey, beginning with Valerie, do we have any questions of, of the report?
Sure, since it was brought up, can you describe a little bit what happened at the water park? Just expand so that the public knows and hears it through the meeting, whatever you wish to share.
Sure, absolutely. Jay, did you want to cover that?
So the, the water park pump room that runs everything so we can be legally open for the state, maintain chlorine levels, GPMs, everything else. We had a 480-volt service coming directly off of BG&E line into the pump room that was heating up the initial breaker, what I call on the hot side. So you'd have to be there to see it physically, but when you open a cabinet and you can hear the electricity, you have a lot of respect for it. So it's something we could not do without BG&E coming out to troubleshoot, see what was going on. And we did reach out to them. We had some back and forth. We all know there were recent storms. They had a lot of people and resources out of state dealing with different issues. And there were some back and forth and we've met since then. We had some issues we had to clear up. But in interim, we found a way to have a contractor come in, work under a hot suit, which where they suit up, mask up, and they're working on 480 volt right off the line, which we found a guy who did some previous work at the water park was able to do that, resolve the situation and, and get back online because we felt we might not have a timely response from BG&E. And just for clarification, till this day, I can't put my finger on exactly what happened. I'm suspect high demand, low voltage, which increased the amperage on all of our pumps. You think about the water park, it's got 11 pumps and they're running. Some of them are 30 horsepower, it's a lot of demand. But we, we never found a smoking gun even doing this work. We've ordered a spare breaker, we're ready for the next thing. I feel we're good, we're online. But till this day, I still can't tell you exactly what happened to cause that power surge on the other side of our breaker.
And I would just add that there are a couple of measures that we are looking into to prevent this disruption in the future that we'll be bringing back to council.
Yes.
Thank you.
I feel like, I feel like I want to follow up. So this is the first time that anything like this has ever happened, right? I mean, like where, there, there's been no indication like anything like this could ever happen and then it did. It was a one-time event that.
It was, it was an anomaly. A lot of things have happened downstream where we have control and we can turn the breaker off ourselves and work safely, everything down. This was between our breaker and the BG&E pole feed. So we, there's nothing we could do. And that is the first time in my 17 years that's ever happened.
It goes without saying that anything that would, you know, improve safety, I'm all for. So whatever ideas y'all come up with, you know.
We're actively engaging with BG&E as we speak to, to make it safer and.
Any sort of monitors, whatever might be, I'm not an electrician and I don't play one on TV. So whatever you need to do to ensure that everyone's safe.
We're, we're definitely moving forward.
Actually, I did have one question for Holly, it's not in the report, but I just wanted to see what's up. If one thinks about the wooden walkway across from Merlins on the west side of 261, is there any update on if that's going to have an RFP, the wooden walkway that goes along the bamboo right across from Merlins?
The wooden walkway, you said on 261, heading towards Beach Elementary School?
Yes.
Yes, we actually, we are working right now to replace the boards on that. Is that what you're referring to? Yes.
I thought there, is there going to be more, instead of replacing one board at a time, is there going to be a more wholesale sort of replacement of that wooden sidewalk? Or that wooden walkway, whatever we want to call it?
All of it would be replaced. All of the boards would be replaced at the same time.
And that's just an ongoing kind of thing that Public Works is doing? So we don't need an RFP, a company or anything like that, correct?
So Public Works does it on an as-needed basis. So they're pulling up boards and replacing them as they go, as you said, kind of a little more piecemeal. We are going to utilize our contractor windmill farms to actually do all of the work. We have the materials, Jay's already had that in-house. So we have the materials and he will provide the labor to install.
And so at, at the end of the day, whenever that might be, that whole wooden sidewalk will be, or wooden walkway will be replaced at some point in the future?
Very soon.
Very soon?
The, the top, the top, the railings and the, the boards.
Okay, so like maybe by the end of summer, is that too soon?
No, that, that's accurate.
That's fair? Okay, that, that was all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
Thanks for the update on the water park. That certainly leaves me with no further questions, but I appreciate at least having that much information. I just have one question for Holly on the Taste of Beaches. You put out vendor forms. I'm kind of curious, any kind of response? Like what, what do we think on that?
We do, we have about 15 vendors so far, a mix of food and local vendors. They're all local to the Twin Beaches at this time.
Cool, okay, thanks.
Larry?
Question for you on the federal, on the dredge bids were received on Tuesday. Any updates on that?
I have not followed up with her. But I know, I did speak with her last week and she was on, on point with their timing. So I will follow up and find out who they've awarded to.
Okay. And I don't know for this report or Carla's report, but another point on Taste of Beaches for public information is in addition to the two towns working together on this, we're also going to be in partnership with the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce as an additional sponsor and participant in the planning of the event. So that should bring even more participants and people to come to the event. Thank you.
Great news. Mr. Morris, I almost skipped you there, bud. Sir?
Okay, thank you. At the Safe Routes to School, Holly, I was wondering, the RFP for that, is that going to be a design-build project out for bid?
It's 100% design and construction drawings.
100% design and construction drawing? So we're putting out to bid basically the design of the walkway? And then when we get that in hand, we're going to put that out for bid, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank. The Highland Special Tax District, I know we've been kind of following that. I think, I just, if you could please keep council apprised of any new upcoming public meetings associated with that. I would appreciate it. I definitely would like to attend the next one. I did attend the last one. I'm certainly pleased with the town's maneuvering and its position on this matter. The, the Kellums Field, the 430-foot of pipe, storm drain pipe that I guess we're going to install there, that's with MDE. How long have they had the application for that?
They've had the application. They're coming up on their 45 days.
Okay, not, not too long in grand scheme of those type, you know, those type of processes. And if there's anything, you know, we can do to help advance that with MDE, you know, write-in campaign, anything would be great there. Just let us know, otherwise we're certainly watching that. Last but not least, wondering, when, when council, when town council will collectively be discussing the use of the $6 million in ARPA funds?
Yeah, that's slated for September.
September, okay. September.
September, is that what I heard?
That's what you heard.
Yeah, okay, certainly, I know, and I'm only speaking for myself, but we're certainly anxiously looking forward to that discussion. Thank you very much.
Greg? Keith?
No additional questions, thanks.
Peggy?
I have two quick ones. On the first page where you're talking about rehabbing the Southern Jetty, you mean like the one side of it? It's going to be rehabbed, it's first paragraph under Army Corps of Engineer. Why the Southern Jetty?
So they are rehabbing the Southern Jetty. So as you're going out the inlet, it'd be the right-hand side. They're not, they're not doing anything on the left and north side.
Why?
That's where the sediment, which is apparently filling into, into the harbor, is coming from. So they're raising it to keep the sediment out.
Wonderful, thank you. And a quick question on page two, Bayfront Park. There's a small structure that'll be placed at the entry of the park for staff protection. Is that against the weather or? Yes. Okay, good, because those are pretty against the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay, Operations Manager report, we've read the report. Peggy, if you've got any questions, we'll start with you.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say, I really liked your night slides. It looks like a, a great way to sort of bring people in at a different sort of time. And have you had, have you've had a few? How, how are they going?
We've only had one at this point. Our last one was canceled due to the partial power outage. But we do have a, we added a bonus night slide for Friday, August 5th, for town and county residents only. Cool. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just a lot of great events, so thanks.
Greg?
Yes, thank you. No questions, just a couple of comments. You really can't satisfy all the people all the time and with this power failure, the water park is no exception. I do appreciate some of the creative ways that we've softened the impact of temporary closure. It's certainly helped to dispel some of the, the little bit of public criticism that was floating around out there. And for the group, and that was really an awesome discussion that you had there, what you did and everybody involved, really smart recourse, smart discussion when that's going on. Great planning for, for, you know, a future event of that sort. Jay's just, you know, he's just ahead of the curve there, right out of the gate. You know, that's certainly what we expect out of, you know, Public Works Director, who's probably among the best here on the bay. Thanks.
Greg, I just have to make a correction, it is the best in the state of America. But you're on the right target there, yeah. Thank you, sir. And Larry?
Sorry to be redundant, but I'll just again tout the Taste of Beaches just because it's a big event. And since the council's not going to have our regular August council meeting, we'll be right on top of that event the next time we're together as a council. So hang in there and put it on your calendars. Thank you.
Very well. Sir?
I just have a question about national layout. So I, I'm not familiar with that and, and so I'm just going to say, I have no idea what that event looks like. But if you're having it at Kellums Field, and Councilman Morris may want to weigh in on this as well, it would maybe be interesting to have some sort of booth or, or table that has some of the plans that we've been debating for Kellums Field available at that event. And I don't know if that's appropriate because I don't know anything about what that event looks like. So I ask if that would make sense.
So I can touch base with the Northeast Community Center. They are the actual event planners for this. We are the venue, so we're a sponsor for this, but I could definitely reach out to Erica and discuss that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be, that seems cool, yeah.
Thank you. Valerie?
Yeah, actually I have two questions. And mentioning Erica, if you're interested, we do pathway and paddle, paddle and pathway pickup and is scheduled for October. And we do it in conjunction with Northeast Community Center. So if you want to be involved in those talks and planning, let me know. Yeah, it's part of the green team and so just because that we, we kind of like have a point of contact for the Northeast Community Center. So maybe she's not hearing from all of us, you know, in different sorts of ways. So if you're involved, that'd be great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, more than welcome.
Thank you so much.
And then actually getting down to some questions on the water park. How's staffing going? I had, because we don't get a lot of information at a town council level on what's going on at the water park in any real depth. And so I know that a lot of areas are having problems, problems finding staffing. And there was recently an article about the lack of lifeguards around the US, not in Chesapeake Beach, but around the US. Are you finding problems staffing, especially with lifeguards?
So we were actually part of that article. We, have we seen a dip in numbers? Yes. Has it been drastic enough to halt operation? No. So I will put a lot of that on our aquatics manager and how our aquatics department is set up. Our aquatics manager, Savannah Richardson, gives all of their, all of her staff her utmost attention and she will make sure that her staff has all of the training and everything necessary and the resources to do their job effectively. So that personal attention definitely keeps our retention rate up. I will say our retention rate is our, our best driver right there because we do have a lot of returning guards from the previous years. We also are competitive with wages, but we also offer, the town covers the cost for uniforms if they stay the remainder of the season. We also cover the cost of training as well. So I think it's just a mixture of everything. We have people keep coming back. I will say the staff numbers dipped during COVID and kind of stayed the same, but we haven't had a loss since then.
That, that's really good to hear because I, you know, you just hear about staffing problems.
Yeah.
Other than that, in your opinion, how, how is the water park going? How's attendance and your revenues? Because I'm always kind of a revenue kind of person. We haven't heard much about how it's kind of going. How's it going this season?
It's actually going really well. I just did a revenue and expense analysis, but I'm not ready to present that yet. But things are going really well.
I had no clue you were working on that, that wasn't a setup, I didn't know.
It's okay.
So fantastic and thank you. And I'll get in touch with you and we can coordinate with Erica regarding the paddle and pathway pickup, okay?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works report, if we have, we've read Jay's report. If we have any, I'll, I'll begin with Valerie and work my way around.
No, my questions have actually been answered in the other reports, so thank you.
Very well. And Mr. Frank?
Yeah, you guys noted here that, and actually it's in both the engineers' report and the public works that you guys have done sort of getting close to a final walkthrough or initial walkthrough at the heritage. Last couple of times, not that you've ignored it, but now, now that that's real and you have a punch list, I would love to see that, just for my own education. I'm not, not looking to add things to it, but I'd love to see it and know what's on it.
Sure, and I'll, and I'll, if you ever get a chance and you want to drive through there, the biggest part of it is all the blue paint on the curb and sidewalk that we're not accepting that the town will own, that they're in the process now of replacing. And the rest of it's kind of utilities that you wouldn't see, meters that weren't set right, in my opinion, clean outs. But the biggest part of it is the concrete work. If you ever want to drive through there, you'll see it because they're underway right now replacing.
I walk through there a lot, so I will pay more attention to that.
You'll see a lot, a lot of blue paint.
Thanks.
No comments on your report, but just I guess a request more than anything. Can we look into getting the clock fixed on 260 and St. Andrews Drive? That clock has not worked in a very long time now.
Are you saying the actual time is incorrect?
It's not working.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Take a look, see what you think.
It's got to work twice a day, Larry.
Good point. I'll have to come, I'll have to adjust my schedule to be there accordingly. As Vice President of the Council, I'm filling in for the mayor who stepped out for a moment. So Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir, thank you, that was funny, thanks. At the ball field, I see we deposited 360 tons of sand to work that and maintain that stuff over there. What was, what was the cost of that, do you know?
They weigh the trucks, we give an initial price per ton and they haven't sent me the actual, I have the tickets of their weight, but they haven't sent me the price. But I can follow up with you, Greg, and get you that.
You know, no need to track that, just for me. Jay, I was just wondering, now, I think in Wayne's report, he reported that the stormwater pipe was complete, but I might be wrong, but that, that stormwater pipe has not been installed yet because we're waiting on MDE right now. He's had a permit application for 45 days. Is any, was the sand placed on over areas that are going to need to be excavated for the pipe? that are going to need to be excavated for the pipe?
The actual football field footprint, the pipe is only going to go over about 60 feet of that in the corner. So we did sand. It's not like we left out a five-foot path in that area. And when we go through, we've stocked piled some sand to top dress it too when we're done. But we didn't leave that section out. You know, the pipe is 400 and some foot long, but where it traverses the actual football field is only about 60 foot.
Yeah, okay, that's not very far. A very, very long length there, I know. And it seems like something we're going to bid out, that pipe. And it might be something, you know, including the bid scope, you know, that the excavation over there in that corner of the football field includes about 60 linear foot of sand that you would need to be restored in some way. The follow-up on Larry's question about the clock that's not working there, where are we with the Veterans Park waterfall?
We have a contractor coming in who's given us actually a proposal, and we've accepted it and everything, to do the painting on the backside of the fountain, the front in front of the flag, and the two wing walls, if you will, where the flower beds are. But he's not going to be able to get in here until August is the schedule. And I'm not going to have it online until after he comes.
And why, why can't we have it online?
Due to the concrete right now, Greg, if you go look at it closely, it's all porous and it's open. And it's kind of, the calcium's coming out on both sides, on the left and the right. And it's the, in matter of fact, when this contractor comes for two weeks, I'm going to turn off all the irrigation prior to him coming, or he won't warranty the work.
Sure. So you're saying that that the concrete, that the water streams down needs to be sealed?
Correct. Not, not just sealed. And his, his warranty will, will say it will remain sealed. But he wants it dry, everything, before he'll even work on, including irrigation.
Oh, it sounds like a process. I know that you're working through that. And I know we're certainly in support of the holiday lighting with the supporting the armed forces. You know, we're, I mean, I don't have to tell you that, you know, the town's very proud of that park there. And, you know, we're getting through summer here. And I guess it's possible, then, that that waterfall won't be running at all this season?
If he completes it in early August, I definitely, he only needs 48 hours after his product. It's a three-part application, takes him almost four days. But he said 48 hours after he's done, we can fill it and run it. And that's my plan.
Awesome, Jay. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, one last thing. The rails that were demoed from the Fishing Creek Bridge, I know that we, through John Bacon and some other efforts, and you were instrumental, we have some of those rails as old historic fabric in our garden there on the side of Town Hall. But did I see some of those rails over there in front of West lawn?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. Thanks, Jay.
Sure. Sure.
Thank you. No additional questions.
Peggy?
No questions. Thank you.
All righty.
Mayor, could I take one second, say something?
Yes, sir.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Wires Inc., Mike Wade, through this whole water park thing. He was on the phone, he was able to, we've got a spare breaker that's sitting in Carla's office right now, that he spent a few hours in front of the internet tracking down. There was a used one in California. There was a manufacturer in Ohio that was a six-month back order. But we have some pull with Dominion, a company that we ordered through. Long story short, he did a lot of legwork. He was also here the three times BG&E was possibly going to show up, including some weekends, to do the work if they were able to come offline. So I just wanted to mention that, that, and he lives close to town, which has beneficially definitely helped us through this process.
I appreciate you sharing that, Jay.
Sure.
I think we all appreciate that. Okay, Water Recreation Treatment Plant Report. We have read Josh's report. Peggy, do you have anything for gentlemen?
Hey, Josh, thanks. I just have a question on the corrective maintenance stuff that's going on. Is that like standard pace of corrections?
I'm trying to remember exactly what I had on there for corrective.
You're not going to read that?
There you go.
There's a few of the items. Well, you would really
That one was part of our, part of the asset management program that we've started using. We're starting to look at things that really had not been looked at before. And this was something that corrective maintenance, something where we've identified an issue, be it through just observation, temperature readings, pressure readings, something like that. This was more of an observation thing. And we, it took a little bit of time to actually track those bolts down. I think it took us three months just to get the bolts. And it took a month of communication just to even figure out what bolts we needed.
Yeah.
Actually get them put into that part. So we were able to get those replaced. And now we can actually just go and build, check the oils and everything in that gear reducer. And the other parts are just regular routine maintenance going through. We check belt tensions on the air scour blowers on a monthly basis. And the UV banks are checked weekly. And we have to maintain those, because that's our primary disinfection as it leaves the plant.
All right. Thank you.
Questions, Keith?
Well, yeah, I do have one. And I also just wanted to say nicely done to, I guess, Randy Wilkerson and, and the folks working with him to fabricate some of those cleaning devices that were described here. I don't know a lot about it, but it sounds like that was a very useful thing to do. So can
Yes. It's, we have to start maintaining the, around the clarifier, get that algae off there. It's just been accumulating. And there was no easy way to do it. The best that we had done in the past was to drain the clarifier down completely, and then take a pressure washer and go around, knock everything down. We haven't been able to do that because of the weather not cooperating. So in the meantime, we said, okay, well, we need a way to be able to do this. And we need to be able to fabricate something, be able to get to that part and actually clean it. So I gave some suggestions to them of what we needed to do, and suggestions on what parts they could use. And they were able to fabricate something to get the job done.
Very nice. Very nice. And so, so yeah, so now you guys don't have to drain it down as often as you were doing before, do you think?
We were only doing it once a year. And that was just to go and primarily check all the components of the clarifier. And incidental to that, they'd pressure wash everything down and do a full cleaning on that. But this is something we can do in the meantime, just to maintain it
Okay.
as a reasonable level.
Right. Very nice. The other question I, or the question I do have is on that next paragraph about staff identified an increase in fecal level in the plant effluent, and then the source was identified as being the, in the non-potable water tank. So how did that get in there? How?
We are not sure. We had, in the week prior, we had started using the non-potable more frequently for our sprayers, for our basins, knock down foam. And we're thinking that it's something that had just accumulated in there. And through using the non-potable pumps more frequently, we just stirred something up. As soon as we identified it, we isolated the tank, and then said, okay, well, how are we going to address this? So we pumped it down, pumped out what we could out of there, back to the head of the plant, used some chlorine in there to chlorinate the tank, confirmed that the chlorine had taken care of the problem, ensured that we didn't have chlorine going back into the plant, and then just fed everything back through on a press run, when we're running our sludge press, use the town water to actually feed through the non-potable to just flush the whole thing out.
Okay.
And did a fecal test on that and came back at zero.
Okay.
And then we're able to put it back in service.
All right. Thank you.
Mars?
Yeah, great report, Josh. Thanks. I knew that, we knew that the, that facility over there may not be most glamorous service in town, but it may be the most important one. And we know that learning from the past, being ready for the present, and planning for the future are important for these sorts of facilities. And we can't underscore that enough. And we're glad you're on the job. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Very well. Larry?
I have to disagree with my colleague, Mr. Morris, giving my professional career. That is a very glamorous facility.
Congratulations on that. Thanks for sharing that.
And also, I just wanted to offer my congratulations again to Randy Wilkerson for the work that he did. Congratulations once again. No SSOs or bypasses. And I saw earlier that the RFP for the filter covers is, is it out on eMaryland Marketplace or soon to be?
Has it gone yet?
Not yet.
Very close, sir.
Very close.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I have, I appreciate the clarification on the, on this issue with the fecal level measurement. I had sort of just underlined the last line, fecal readings did not exceed the plant permit discharge limit, and said, well, that's the bottom line. But nice to know that there's a procedure when, you know, red flag goes off and it's dealt with.
Yes, sir.
Rather than disagreeing with Greg, I'm going to agree with Larry. I think you should all just ask yourself why the Bay Ferry is coming to Chesapeake Beach. Or is it the water plant?
We could charge. All right.
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, you and Randy, I think, need to request a patent on your fabrications, which is my new favorite word of the week. Fabrication. That's really quite clever of you guys.
Thank you, man.
So look for it. It's Valerie. Look for a patent, a patent for it. You should.
Right.
What the heck. For you guys, not the town, you know. And the question, or the, another one. On the page two, you said that you use a shellfish protection, protection tank four times in the month, in the last month.
Yes.
That seems like a lot, a lot more than normal due to rainfall. Is this also caused by stormwater runoff coming from like us and our partners? Or absolutely. Is there anything that, if there's anything we can do to help with that stormwater runoff, you know, or monitor it, or whatever, coming in from us or our partners, let us know. Like, I remember years ago when we put the SCADA system in, and just how that revolutionized our life regarding the wastewater treatment plant. And if there's something equivalent that's innovative, that would allow us to track exactly where this is coming from, and then address it, know that, I think that'd be a good use of your time. Because four times use of shellfish, holding tank is a lot. And so
And in answer to your comments, Sarah, we are monitoring that flow. We have been in contact with the partners. I've been, each time we have a rain event, I document how much rainfall we had, and the responses of each partner's flow, including the town, from each pump station and from our gravity flow. So we can see graphically where is that response at? The percent increase over dry weather flows for each partner. That way, we can present that in the partners' meetings and start suggesting, okay, hey, somebody needs to start addressing this and solving these problems.
You got it. And of course, I mean, I know you guys are on top of it, you and Holly and Jay and Pat and just everyone. And if it's our problem with stormwater runoff coming in, obviously, you know, whatever needs to happen, you know, to prioritize the areas where we could be creating the problem, that'd be great, too. And I know that we have many programs going on from coastal resiliency to, you know, all the mapping that's going on. But it's an important topic that we don't overburden the wastewater treatment plant when we don't need to. So just, those are my opinions on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Josh. And next, we have the Code Enforcement Report. If you don't mind stepping to the podium, first, I want to say hi to Bucky. I kind of missed you there. Bucky, I kind of walked right by and went there. So just want to say hi, sir. And I believe, I believe, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm pretty close that Bucky's probably lived in Chesapeake Beach longer than anybody else in town.
Probably getting close.
Yeah.
I mean, yes. A lot of the older timers are no longer with us. So
Right. That's why I managed to still here.
Yeah, I would, I may know one or two other people that may have Embiid in age, but not too many.
Yeah, I got you there. And I want to, before I, I go to the council, just, just want to say that, you know, and we heard that, you know, Marjorie Stewart, Tammy spoke earlier, and you know Tammy, right? And of course, Marjorie's was
Do you know, do you know how that relationship is?
Yeah, well, yeah. And her, her mom, who's no longer with us, was my neighbor and a dear friend of mine. So we're talking about, you know,
But do you know Bucky's relationship with Marcia?
Well, I didn't want to go there.
Well, we can.
Okay.
We can. It's a small, you know, one of my favorite sayings is you can't swing a cat in Chesapeake Beach without hitting somebody that's related. But Bucky's deceased brother Butch used to be married to Marcia.
Right.
So yeah, it's a small community.
So her, her, her words, you know, were, you know, they were, we heard earlier, it, you know, it just repeats again and again what, you know, Councilman Morris likes to say every now and then. And he echoes the words of our citizens, which is basically, you know, the town of Chesapeake Beach has gone leaps and bounds in the last six years, you know. And, and there's a lot of credit that goes around, you know, for that. And we always appreciate people like, like Marcia, like the councilman, saying things like these. But, you know, part of this is because we've, of the many people who stepped up to a new administration and just gave it, gave it their all, and, and, and are just, you know, a lot of pride in the town, and a lot of eagerness to move forward, because life is about moving forward.
Absolutely.
And, and Connie Odell, you are certainly one of that group.
Thank you.
We had a, you're, you're really the first, you know, full-time, you know, code enforcement officer that we've ever had, in dire need of a code enforcement officer, I can tell you that much, you know. And as we see from her reports, and, and you've just been so efficient.
Thank you.
And, and the town is, is a beautiful place, okay? In no small part to Connie Odell and this guy and his staff. You know, it's a beautiful town. Okay. So I want to thank you for that. And, and, you know, I wish you wonderful things as you move on in life. But, you know, retirement's a great word, and it's a great thing to do. So I'm, I'm happy for you, as I told you when I heard your happy news. So having said that, I had to get that out of the way before I, I needed any kleenexes or anything. So we've read Connie's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Valerie and work my way around the horn.
Connie, it's been a blessing to have you.
Thank you.
We've been lucky. I do have one question. There, on page four, there's a number of failure to obtain a rental license.
I'm sorry.
Page four.
Uh huh.
The violation is failure to obtain a rental license. With the number of rentals that we have in town, do you see that number as a problem, or is it really kind of minimal? There's like four or five.
We've had a lot of folks step up in the last few months. And honestly, I don't think some of them even realized that it was going on. I mean, honestly, I really don't think they did. The people that I have been targeting, that you see, the properties that I've been targeting that you see on this report, are people that have known for a long time, and just aren't choosing not to do anything about it. And I kind of finally got tired of it, to put it bluntly. Fair enough. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for all your time and all your efforts. You'll be so missed.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to miss everyone, too.
Charlie?
I have no questions on the report. On a professional note, I would, I would offer you the same phrasing that we often use for our military and law enforcement officers. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
On a personal note, I'm going to miss you, man.
Going to miss you, too. Walking by the house all the time.
Larry?
Again, no comments, but on behalf of the entire town, thank you for your service. And Bucky, thank you for your service at the firehouse as well. You'll both be missed here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I don't have any questions about the report. You know, I like to say this a few times a year, and that's, that effective code, effective code enforcement is a tenant of successful economic development. And looking forward to whomever fills your shoes to carry the town forward there. And, you know, Connie, you and I have grown apart a little bit over the years, but I've been in town a long time. And you and Bucky are some of the finest people that I've met in the beaches. So we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Greg and I go back a long time, back to, and both of us had different lives and worked in different respects, but knew each other then.
Sure.
Yeah, no, no questions on the report. And I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the last six years better. And I'm going to miss you.
Thanks. You too, Keith.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
Last but never least, Peggy?
I just, you know, I need to correct the mayor's comment about, you know, you being full-time. I think she was double-time.
Fair enough.
And, you know, when you get tired of the retirement thing, you can come back and volunteer.
I can come back often just to see how things are progressing, and just to visit and say hi.
Oh, yeah. That'd be great.
Thank you all so much.
On that note, I can't, I think that's great. So
Thank you.
Okay, feel like calling a meeting right now. Okay, give me a second here. Okay, No Town Treasurers Report. We've read the Town Engineers Report, beginning with Peggy. Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions?
The pocket parks, oddly enough. Is there any timing for those? Do you have?
Yes, we have met, had a committee meeting to outline what the goals and plans were that was in the survey. We actually have concept plans prepared. I will send them to Holly tomorrow. And then we'll talk about putting them out for RFP.
Thank you.
No questions.
Greg? Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to unmute here. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All thumbs. Yeah, Wayne, the punch list agreement that you had with the developer at Richfield Station, and I apologize if I asked you this before, you know, we're certainly keenly, painfully aware of how long it's taken to complete down in that area at the trailhead. But when does the agreement expire? How much time does he have left to complete, you know, what he's agreed to do?
I think Todd's going to ask, wants to answer that.
Yeah, we have a meet, Mr. Morris, we have a meeting scheduled with the developer and their attorneys coming up in, what, two weeks? So, one of the purposes of the meeting is to establish really the criteria for the punch list, for the final, at least a preliminary punch list, to discuss, you know, what needs to be done and the steps to move forward. They are anxious to have it finished up, too. And they're looking to do various things regarding finishing up the work. So, you know, that meeting is scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
Is there any idea when they're going to actually have a builder secure to complete the build out down there?
It's one of these, that's one of the things that's going to be discussed. I'm not sure it's, they want it to, they do want it to be discussed publicly right now. But, you know, we'll certainly keep you informed of the meeting. But that's one of the things that they want to discuss.
Well, thank you, Todd. It seems like a builder is missing the boat here, you know, with this housing market. But switching gears, Wayne, over to the Kellums Field, you had noted that new form drain out fall under the field to create positive drainage is complete. But that, it's not complete, right? Or still need to construct that, correct?
I think I left a word out there, Greg. The design is complete.
Just checking.
And to answer your MDE timing question from your prior question, the field meeting is, it's going to be MDE day out on the same night as night out, August the 2nd, is when we're walking with MDE to hopefully get their final comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No additional questions. Thank you. I don't, what can I say about the safe rots to school? I have no questions, and that's wonderful.
That's a great thing.
And you, other questions have already been answered. I'm actually see the pocket park plan. So, that'll be exciting. Thanks.
Sure.
Hi, I have a few questions. On Richfield Station, it talks about impossible inverted sections in preparation for work. Over the years, I know that, like, in working with Jay, when he's done his reports, just going back for a decade, he sometimes talks about inverted pipes. So, and I know what a problem they can cause. But I'm not understanding this. And so, are they having to rework sections in Richfield Station because of inverted pipes? I know we've had problems with them before in other places also, I believe. So, what is like the history or what? I mean, I don't mean to sound totally clueless here, but I read that and I'm confused a little. Like, are they having the, where are the inverted pipes in Richfield Station?
So, there are some home leads in, that we have surveyed that appear to have inverted pipes, which means they're running backwards. So, that's, I think, part of the conversation that Todd's going to be having with them as far as the remediation, when we're going to move forward on that and what they're going to do. We'd be looking for them to repair those.
Are they on what will be personal property or on potentially property that might be taken over by the town? Where the inverted pipe is located, would it be eventually town property or personal property?
It appears to be on both at this time. Personal property and town property.
And so, are these areas where we have not obviously been asked to take over, as a town of Chesapeake Beach, ownership of these yet, correct?
Correct. That's why the punch list is there. We won't, we will not accept them until they're fixed.
Okay, you guys are on top of it. So, I just know that, I saw inverted pipe, and I know it's been an issue in other areas before, and that's why I brought it up. Thank you for the explanation. Take care of us, because I'm clueless.
Jay's taking good care of you. It was his intuition, we said, let's go survey these things and see if what I think is correct is correct and keeps correct.
Is this partially due to the fact that, where they, is this area that we're talking about, is it because it was like a sloped area in Richfield Station?
So, just, as I know Wayne, you know, Paul Woodburner was aware of this, and I brought Wayne up to speed. But basically, Block S was started seven to eight years ago and fell off. The developer left town, literally. So, those citizens are town citizens, but we've never taken over anything. So, now that they're back in town, I generated a punch list, and I said, hey, X, Y, and Z, I know is wrong. But before you come back and build on, let's take care of this. So, that's the whole meeting. I know of certain things brought to me by citizens. I've seen them, and we're out there. But while we have this opportunity, we're looking at everything now before we let anyone move forward as a town. Let's fix what we know is wrong. And none of it has been accepted. But unfortunately, you know, we have citizens living down there, been there for seven years. And the town stepped in in some areas, and the developer paid us back just to pave roads and make certain amenities. But they're back at the table, and I want to make sure that we're getting what we deserve.
Thank you for taking care of us. I mean...
And I've asked Wayne, as an engineer, to look, you know, I'm not shooting grades, but I know, so he's on board, and we all understand it. And I think we're ready to sit at the table.
Yeah, because eventually, you guys may come to Town Hall to ask, you know, Town Council to ask us to take ownership of those roads. And I just, and thank you for being on top of it. And thank you for that explanation. Kellums Field, I have a question. It mentions pickleball and tennis courts on Kellums Field. Where would they go?
There was a concept master plan, which we did, that put them in the northwest corner of the park, near the parking lot. That was just a concept. We showed them.
Okay. I was just, I saw that and I was like, because we just had a discussion on the tennis courts at the work session regarding those at Beach Elementary School. And I was like, wait a second. Okay. And finally, Larry often mentions his career. And so, I'll mention mine. I have a, I'm a geographer. And so, on the water park, you mentioned a 3D model. If at all feasible and possible, I'd love you to present that, you know, just pop it up so that they can see what, is it done? What program did you use?
Trimble Business Center.
Okay, yeah. Pop it up and see what it looks like.
We will.
I think, I think it'll be illuminating.
It will be.
To say the least.
Yep.
And do you actually model the water that is underneath the water park with all the infill that's disappeared?
I can. That would be, it's not what we shot. That would be put in because it was underwater. We couldn't, the machine couldn't see it. But we could put it in the model and show that as well, if you'd...
Did you say it was underwater?
When we shot the water park, the water was in the park and running. So, the scanner will only pick up what it sees.
Got it.
So, it picks up everything above the water because water becomes a reflection. And actually, we had to come back and rescan an area because it was a bright sunny day, and the water was reflecting, and the points were not accurate. So, we came back on a cloudy day and rescan it.
I think it'd be cool to show the council and residents that. It's pretty neat stuff.
When we finish the 3D modeling of it, we will bring it in and we'll show it to you.
Thank you.
Pretty cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up comment, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne and Jay, for your explanation here of what's been happening down at Richfield Station there, that unfinished area. I appreciate that. Thank you. Now, it's my understanding that the storm drains will turn over to the HOA down in that area, won't they?
Correct. But what we're looking at specifically was the sewer that the town will own, Greg.
Okay. And you've gone through the same processes with the stormwater piping and the structures that are there to make sure that all of that stuff is in proper working condition?
They're also on the punch list, and there are some known things that they need to fix. But I'm not suspect of any great issues there. I didn't see any need to shoot in elevations there. It's more of the physical conditions, no inverts, unparched pipes, broken manholes, such, things such as that.
I know that the developer missed all of the channeling and probably every structure in the community outside of that area there, you know? And so, invariably, all of them hold water. And I shouldn't say this, but it makes me laugh when the mosquito guys go in around spraying because, you know, we've got that incomplete work down in there. I know you guys, you know, this was a learning curve over the years for all of us here. But I appreciate what you're doing down there. I mean, you're absolutely right. Come to town for profit here. We hold the keys here, and this is an important juncture here for all of us. The HOA doesn't have a lot of recourse there, aside from hiring their own third-party independent engineer to inspect stuff. And so, we are dependent on the town to make sure to come through, you know, those items there that are going to eventually turn over to the HOA. That is something we really need from the town, and I know you've been doing that. So, thank you both.
Thank you, sir. Deputies' report. We read the deputies' report. Before I entertain that, I want to, I'm going to take the time to publicly congratulate Captain Ricky Cox on his election the other day. As if history, as in the last 35 years proves true, the winner of the GOP primary is the next sheriff of Calver County. So, you know, Ricky's a, he's a local guy, which is a break, you know? Good kid. I say kid because he, you know, he's a lot younger than me. Good guy. I also want to thank Assistant Sheriff McDowell for his service to the town. I don't know what role he'll be playing in the future. I do know that a big part of when we talk about, you know, how the town has just, you know, moved forward, leaps and bounds in the last six years or so, well, he's been a big part of that. We've never had the accountability from the sheriff's office ever until Dave took over. So, you know, we're hoping that we can retain that. And that will be the first point of conversation I will have with the new sheriff. You know, trust me. And just to make sure that everybody is at ease, you know, both Mr. Cox and Mr. McDowell, they, you know, they know, like and respect each other, and they both agreed, as the campaign was, you know, going on, that we would be in good shape if either one, you know, was victorious. So, we are in good shape, and I want to do that. So, we have any questions of the deputies' report? I'll begin with Valerie.
Hi. Thank you for your service to our town. We appreciate it. I do have, it's more like, it was disconcerting to read the disorderly where a suspect discharged a shotgun into the air to burst a crowd. What is going on there?
From what I read on the report, they were having some type of gathering there. He wanted people to leave. I guess they were having too much fun and didn't want to leave. So, he persuaded him to leave.
In his own way.
He persuaded him to go to jail.
Good job.
That's one way to leave.
And, thank you.
Everybody left when we showed up.
Oh, good. But thank you.
I have no questions. But thank you for your service.
You are.
No questions. Stay safe.
Thank you as well, sir. And y'all did a great job on fireworks later. I mean, this was such a safe town. I mean, I heard that over and over again, if people drive it through. I drove through it about 8:30, which was odd. And, I mean, it was just unbelievable how orderly it was as in the past. So, and when you look at what went on around this country, you know, during that weekend, and you look at what happened in Calver County, I'll say you guys and gals are the best. No doubt, you know? So, thank you. Mr. Morris, I probably beat you to the punch.
Yes, you have. You know, I can't follow the mayor's comments there. And I don't have any particular questions about the report, but the mayor's comments, I support those 1,000%. You know, I did personally support Lieutenant McDowell. I do know Dave. The good news is, is that he's going to still be involved. And I'm certainly, we're all looking forward to working with Ricky Cox and the new administration there. You know, I think that, you know, what we're losing there with potentially having Dave there, we're gaining a lot having Ricky Cox there as well. So, I'm pleased that he's elected and that he's going to be on watch.
Thank you, sir. I forget which way we're going. To you.
Yeah, I have one question. First, thank you for your service, and I apologize if you don't know this, because a lot of times I would ask ahead of time, just so folks have the time to prepare. But I'd noticed that there was a fatal overdose in North Beach, and I was wondering if you could just tell us a little bit about where that was and the circumstances. It's been a long time since we've had a fatal overdose in either town.
Well, without giving too much personal information, the resident lived at the Stones Motel, and it's a known addict, and took a fatal overdose amount of what we believe either heroin or fentanyl.
All right. Very unfortunate. But thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. And take our kind words back to your colleagues.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Okay, Mayor State of Maryland Legislative Report. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Okay, Larry. We have any questions? Funnel them to Larry.
Just wanted to add on to the report that Fire Department said goodbye to Engine 12 several weeks ago. That piece of apparatus had been in the House 20 years, something like that. It headed on down south to another community, and our new Engine 12 is here, but we're still outfitting it. So, hopefully, it'll be on duty shortly. Thank you.
Very well, yeah. Mayor State of Maryland Legislative Report. It was a busy season up in Annapolis for your mayor. As the mayor of Chesapeake Beach, I represented the town's interest in Annapolis during the 2022 legislative session. My participation included both tracking and testifying on legislation that greatly affects our town. And I wanted to report to the town that I returned home with some huge wins and an unfortunate loss. The good news, multiple bills were introduced in the House and Senate with the intention of more than doubling the number of electric bingo slot machines in town from 450 to 975, approximate numbers. As mayor, I lobbied persistently with the state senate and the House of Delegates, testifying that in the recent 2020 election referendum, Chesapeake Beach citizens opposed the expanded gambling in town by an almost 80% to 20% margin, and that the town council subsequently passed legislation to support the referendum. The senate and House recognized the election referendum results and my concerns about the expansion of gambling in Chesapeake Beach. And fortunately, these bills died in committee. This is a huge win for me, the council, and the town's citizens. Also, while in Annapolis, I worked with the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee to successfully secure $400,000 grant to fund the recent Richfield Station water tower painting capital project. And I want to personally thank Senator Michael Jackson, who serves on that committee. Senator Jackson is our senator. This grant will allow the town to replenish our utility fund reserves and continue to contribute to the vital infrastructure used to provide one of the most important services that we provide to our town residents, clean water. Governor Hogan recently signed legislation that will increase the percentage of highway user revenues for all municipalities in Maryland. This means that the town will receive more money to pave roads and sidewalks. So, thank you, Mr. Governor. You were a great one. And thank you, Senator Jackson and Delegate Fisher. Now, the unfortunate. State legislators approved legislation that preempted the town's ability to collect an admission and amusement tax on sports gambling revenues. This is unfortunate, as the increased traffic from sports gambling will further burden our infrastructure and public services, in addition to adversely affecting our town revenues from electronic bingo slot machines. Looking ahead, and I have been looking ahead... Um, looking ahead, and I have been looking ahead, um, I will continue my directing engagement in the legislative process advocating for the citizens and the town of Chesapeake Beach. So, so there we are, it's a lot to, to digest, but I, I, you, you know, a lot of times, you, you know, when session's over, everybody comes back home, and, you know, if you didn't read about it in the local newspaper, you don't know. I mean, you don't know. And, uh, in this case, um, these things were not, you know, reported. Um, not knocking anybody, but they, the local, you know, reporters have a lot, you know, going on, but I think this is very important to our town, so I consider it to be my obligation to keep the citizens involved on something important as this. I mean, it, it was so important that we did a referendum, and so if we, and we passed, you know, legislation. So, if, if it's that important, then I certainly feel an obligation to, to come here and make everybody aware of, of what is going on, what happened, and what I intend to fight in, in the future. So, having said that, um, the council may or may not have some questions on this, which I will gladly field, uh, beginning with Peggy. If not, that's fine, too.
I, and my question is, do all the mayors attend the legislative sessions?
Yeah, the legislative session goes on for 90 days. It's just, it's just there, and, and, um, you know, uh, mayors have an opportunity to attend or, or not. I, I think basically, you know, a good mayor is going to attend something that, you know, pertains to, to him, you know, not just the regular all-mayors gathering where everybody goes for, for that there. But I don't take a roll, a, a roll count of mayors. I can tell you that I may be the most active mayor in the state of Maryland in terms of going to Annapolis every year, and a lot of that is, you, you know, I'm not patting myself on the back as much as I'm telling the people what you elected here, you know? I am retired, okay? Um, we do live down the street, you know, down the road, I'm not crossing state, so I had the opportunity to drive up there at will, and I do. I testified many, many times, I testified more times this, this session than my entire time in town government, which is 26 years. I was, I was everywhere, they, they knew me fondly. And to be honest with you, and I know it'll come up, and I'm sure, you know, there'll be a, a question on the, um, sports gambling. Um, we, I, I was a bit of a, um, celebrity, if you will, because, uh, I was the guy who found the loophole in, in the law, and, and they got a charge out of that, you know? And, and, you know, we founded it, you, you know, we acted on it. Um, the, the feeling that I came away with was, you know, wow, Mayor Mahoney, you spotted that, huh? You know? And the concern with the, you know, legislators was not, they didn't really have, I won't say care, it was barely a ripple what we would have gotten out of that, you know? It wasn't really raising any eyebrows, but, but the bigger picture for those folks was basically, it was a loophole that has to be closed, and, and they just couldn't allow, you know, um, say Baltimore City to have that, that could, that, that, that doesn't charge one quarter of one percent admission and amusement tax. I mean, you can charge, I think, in Maryland up to like 10%, maybe even more, you know? And so that would have been a, a huge problem, you know, to, to allow, you know, a, a city like that to collect, you know, well, basically, well, it just would have been a mess, you know? And it was almost like, sorry, Pat, you know, this, this isn't about you, this is about the state of Maryland, you know, on a bigger level. But, but either way, I, I, I got my say, and, and they told me to come back, and, and I will, guarantee that, you know? So, um, that was more than answering your question, but, well, I've been living and breathing this for a long time.
I'll pat you on the back, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your efforts, uh, great job on, on that, and, uh, I don't have any additional questions, so thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Uh, yeah, that's a pretty good report. Um, you know, there's, uh, some goal setting there for any future mayor of this town there. Our mayor needs to be engaged at state level, and, uh, your ability to be able to, to deliver on that, um, clearly is an advantage for everybody in this town, so, uh, thank you for that. Um, you know, I'm certainly disappointed that we're not able to tax the sports betting. That needs to happen. Um, I don't think there's any if ands or buts about it, but, uh, I know about these type of processes, and there's sometimes there's just incremental by year changes, and they transition into things, um, and I'm okay with that, you know? Everybody knows I'm not an all enough person. Um, the needle's moving in the right direction, generally I'm happy enough. Um, so, but again, um, that, that's a great report, Mayor, we appreciate that service.
Well, thank you, and if I can add, you know, two things. One is, I, I, you know, I'm always big on giving credit where it's due, and, uh, you know, while Senator Miller was in office, he did take it upon himself to personally, you know, show me around Annapolis and introduce me to people I never would have had a chance to meet, you know? So, I, I have to, you know, you know, give that, that credit there, and, um, and I will say that, you know, when it was, you know, clear to me, or made, you know, clear to me that, um, this, this bill, you know, preempting or not allowing municipalities to, uh, collect the A and A tax, I, um, I said, okay. So then I testified, would they, would, would they put an exception in there for Chesapeake Beach? I mean, they do all kinds of stuff, you know, add in a, add in a line, so I testified for that. Uh, it didn't happen, but I gave it my shot anyhow, you know, and, and, and that's that. So, thank you, Mr. Morris, uh, sir.
No further comments, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, it's good, very good report, uh, thank you. Uh, no questions.
It may take a while to see what the financial impact is on the sports gambling A and A loss, but, um, you can only do so much, and your efforts are really appreciated, and you did great. The fact that we're not doubling the number of electronic bingo machines in town is a huge win, and thank you to, to the residents who voted that way in the referendum, for town council and the mayor for following up through legislation and then following through, um, even further by going to Annapolis, thank you. Um, that's huge, so, thank you very much.
And thank you, and I will end up by saying that, you know, you know, next year is next year, you know, and, and I certainly have, have a keen eye for, or will have for, you know, bills that may come up, you know, this next session, and I'll, I'll be right on top of it, you know, trust me. And, and I, I'm going to, um, I have some ideas, I don't show my hand, but when, when I am ready to show my hand, the council will, will be the first one to be aware of, of that. So, I'll just leave it, I'll just, just leave it there. Thank you very much. Um, moving right along, uh, the, uh, mayor's report, still you, Pat, okay. Um, well, folks, um, we're in a heat wave, and this is really, you know, so I'm, I'm going to, um, my mayor's report is going to solely be a, a public service announcement. Um, I want to talk about kids and hot cars and share some hot car safety tips. Um, number one, lock your cars. One-third of all hot car deaths are from kids wandering into locked cars. That is unbelievable. Keep your car keys in a safe place. Folks, I, I think we understand that. Another important one that I learned, if, um, if your kid's missing, check the car first, cars first, I should say, that's the first place you check. Um, this is another one that I thought was, teach your kids how to honk. Teach them, if they're in there, car's locked, get up there and honk that damn horn until it goes out, you know? So, I'm teaching your kid to honk a horn, it's going to have a couple moms go, what are you saying, Mayor? You know, but no, I, I think everybody gets the, the, the serious of that. Teach your kids how to honk that horn, you know? You know, check your backseats, we always know that one, you know, but it, it does happen sometimes, you know? And, you know, basically, don't leave your kids with pets in a car, period, you know? Just don't do it. I mean, it's just it, you know, just don't do it, period. So, be safe, everybody, and on a good note, look around here, see you at the water park. Thank you so much. Um, next, um, reports of, of officers and boards, um, playing and zoning commission of, I, I believe we read Cindy's report, if we have any questions she asked, that we, you know, funnel them to her through Holly, so you can send Holly an email if you have any questions that, that need answered. Uh, Board of Appeals, I was at that meeting the other night, both, uh, cases were, um, appearances were approved.
Pat, may I ask a question on that, on the Board of Appeals one?
Go ahead.
Um, well, actually, two things. One is, what were the two issues, and would it be possible when there is a Board of Appeals hearing, much like we have the other reports, could we actually have a report on what those hearings were and what the, the decision was or whatever?
Yeah, um, and it'll, um, I can't speak to it enough to do it justice, and it would not be fair, so I'm not going to comment on the cases. That would not be fair, you know? Um, C-Box, um, if we have any questions, we can, you know, Holly can certainly funnel them through, through Suet, to Suet Alexander. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry?
Thank you. Uh, the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee, uh, had scheduled a meeting for July 13th, but it had to be canceled. Next meeting, the Steering Committee hasn't been scheduled yet. I'll work with Holly and the Steering Committee Chair Jeff Foltz to get it scheduled and post it on the town website as soon as possible. The Coastal Resiliency Work Group is scheduled to meet this next Monday, July 25th. Among other things, the work group's going to discuss the recently completed flood mapping. I, um, sat in on the recent virtual meeting of the North Beach Flood Committee. Our two towns continue to work together to coordinate our respective efforts to address flooding and sea level rise, and I'd like to ask Co-Chair Keith if he has anything to add. EDC, so there's been no meeting of the Calver County Economic Development Advisory Commission since our last council meeting. Next meeting of, uh, what we call EDAC, scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th. The next meeting of the County Economic Development Authority is scheduled for Monday, August 8th, at eight o'clock in the morning. Um, has, has been reported, our town's next big economic development committee activity is Taste of Beaches, Saturday, September 17th, 1 to 5, working with the town of North Beach to reach out to various vendors and participants, and also working with the Calver County Chamber of Commerce to promote our event. Shaping up to be the largest Taste of Beaches event yet, so make sure you have it on your calendars. Co-Chair Greg, anything to add?
Uh, yeah, thanks, thanks, uh, Councilman. You know, our town, we know that our town inherently does a lot of things that are just, that are naturally good economic development things, um, and they really don't need much help with a lot of that stuff. Tonight, there was discussion with some new topics that, you know, certainly are good for economic development, uh, you know, we'll be hoping for that, that the fairytale development to, to move forward, um, and some other things that are, always add to, to the excitement of being here, uh, in the town, so, um, you know, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just a quick report this month, um, our next meeting is Thursday, July 28th, at the pavilions at 6:30. We look forward to participating in the Taste of the Beaches, I'm glad to say our vendor form was approved, and, and, um, we're working on a variety of gardens throughout town, providing, um, a list of native plantings that will hopefully, uh, occur around October 3rd. And so, glad to see that the wooden railings, uh, cross and rollings are going to be, uh, redone, and, uh, that's all that I have. So, July 28th, our next meeting at the pavilion, 6:30.
Uh, yeah, um, the committee's been provided with a draft, recently with a draft plan, and they're reviewing that, that plan, um, provided by town hall. Um, certainly warrants of committee getting together, uh, planning to, to meet to discuss, uh, the contents of that plan. Um, I, we'll just, we can discuss it at the meeting, but, um, I would encourage the town to continue public outreach regarding, uh, the use and the future use of the, uh, the complex there. Uh, Co-Chair, thank you.
Uh, nothing to add to that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, we had a meeting June 28th of our group, uh, to discuss the upcoming, um, event on August 31st, to, um, be having a glow vigil over at North Beach on the boardwalk, similar to what we did last year, and, um, we'll be announcing the art sculpture, which I've talked a little bit about and shared information previously, as well as that is the same night that Light Up Calver County, or Light Up Calver County Purple will be occurring, and so that's being sponsored again by the, uh, Calver Alliance Against Substance Abuse, as well as the Calver County Health Department, and, um, Candace D'Agostino has developed a schedule for distribution of the purple bulbs, and we, I think we have three, uh, days scheduled for outside of here, and I'll be providing you with, with that schedule. And then I think one day over in North Beach will, where we'll be providing, um, those bulbs, we'll have the Lost Souls exhibit over in North Beach that same night, as well as, um, some speakers yet to be determined, and so, you know, we're not going to have a meeting next week, so I'm going to be in close coordination with, uh, you, uh, you two on the, on events to provide you with that more information, so we can get that out via email.
Yeah, a couple of updates, we had a meeting on, uh, Monday, uh, we, we continue to have a number of projects, uh, on which we are waiting for other folks, uh, but, but we do have a couple of interesting things moving forward now, uh, that, that Holly and I have been, uh, talking about recently, particularly some of the pocket parks, uh, which we now have funding for, um, are moving forward. Our meeting on Monday was mainly focused on the, the wayfaring signage, uh, where we heard from the public what their preferences were, and we spent some time looking at how we would name trails and where we would put signs and how we would plan for expansion of the signs. So, and then we went on a field trip, kind of walked around to a couple of different destinations, uh, so that was kind of interesting. Um, I look forward to consolidating that feedback and bringing it to council for, uh, their review and input. Um, I think at this point, that's all I have, but I'm happy to pass it to Peggy if she has anything to add.
I have nothing to add, thanks, Charlie.
Mayfair, have a comment? Yeah, I apologize, I am in support, um, I, I did the yay for that, I did miss the work session, I just had a couple of comments about the work on the town hall. Um, the, uh, we know that the portions of the town hall are new and there, uh, there was a renovation and expansion that was done, um, but we also know that there's portions of the rest of the town hall's original fabric, um, its original history there. Some of you might recall some of the debates we went through, uh, with restoring the front entranceway there, and I don't know if it's too late here, but, um, and I would certainly urge town to consider restoring the cupola as opposed to replacing it. I, I, reading the details in the, uh, the bid package there, it seemed like we were looking at restoring it there. I would certainly be in favor of retaining as much of the original fabric up there as we can, that makes sense. Uh, we know that we got to maintain some of that stuff, and I, I do sympathize with Jay on some of that stuff, um, but that original metal roof that's up there, um, we would love to see a way to, to keep all of that stuff in place, um, and just, uh, keep the inhabit maintained, you know, for longevity, longevity, particularly because of the historic nature of it. Thanks.
Second.
Hi. Move to approve.
Second.
Hi.
Move to approve with discussion.
Sorry. I'll move to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Yeah, certainly in support of this. I had a question. I wanted to bring attention to, let's see here, the wind farms, the windmill farms attachment with their quote on here. It seems to be reverse of what this motion is, that their, their estimate here states that there's a total first year cost of $7,550, and then the following years, the total cost will be $5,500 annually. And I'd like some clarification on that. Scroll down.
Sure. So, I separated the one-time cost from the annual cost. So, I separated out that first year cost actually includes the annual cost as well. So, there's two phases for the install. He actually has to assemble the displays. So, when they come in, they're not assembled. So, the labor, there's a one-time setup cost to assemble them, install all the lights. And then he actually has to store them away for the holiday. So, that, that first year cost of $7,550, the differential is, is the 2,000, 2,050. But I think-
Okay. Okay. And the windmill farm specifically, but some other math involved there.
I think he's talking about this sheet where it says $5,500 at the bottom annually.
So, that is after the first year. So, the seven, the first year that he has there with the $7,000, I think it's seven-
Right, right. But over here, it says it's $7,200 every year on the motion.
So, there's multiple costs. So, there's two costs in the annual. That is the annual installation and then the electrical. So, the additional is the electrical cost in the $7,250 annually.
Includes both costs.
For both years, each year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Give a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any eyes have it? Okay, at this time, I'll ask, is there anybody in the public that has any comment? I'll keep in a few words. That would be something, wouldn't it? It's great because some things just never change, right?
Fucking I go back a long ways. Most of it, we can't say in public. Okay. Council lightning round. Council woman bow die.
I'd just like to say once again, I thought the fireworks were absolutely fabulous this year. And I look forward to seeing everyone at Taste of the Beaches when it comes up. And just enjoy your summer. Stay cool.
So, after, I got to thinking, after Valerie got so excited about the 3D modeling, and knowing how Larry feels about water treatment facility, and knowing how I feel about the Bay Ferry, I'm thinking that's the next 3D modeling project, water treatment facility.
That's a big project.
Nothing further. Everyone enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, everyone stay safe. Apparently, the weather's going to get even a little bit toastier over the weekend. So, be careful and follow the mayor's guidance on watching your kids and cars. And I'm not sure if I mentioned this before, but Taste of Beaches is a Saturday, September 17th, so put it on your calendar.
If we forget, could you remind us, Larry?
I'm sorry. I should have brought that up earlier.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir. I'd like to remind everybody that COVID is lurking.
Yeah, it's lurking right here.
Yeah, yeah. But not just COVID, you know, the seasonal flus and colds. And I just want to take the opportunity to urge all town businesses to provide hand sanitizers for staff and patrons. I know that, you know, we had developed a saying at the beginning of the season for economic development, that healthy staff and patrons equal healthier town. So, again, please provide and use hand sanitizers. It's really easy just to help prevent spreading of all of these things. It's important to all of us. We're all in this together. And outside of that, me too. Have a happy summer.
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, I've mentioned this before. I just wanted to reiterate it because I, as I think back about it six years ago or so, and where we were in terms of communication and outreach from the town to the community, and where we are now, you know, it's just night and day. And so, I really want to thank the administration and all the staff who put those emails together and get those out. It's like, you know, I know when the mayor sneezes now, all the time. It's like, it's amazing.
And some clean access for my birthday would be appreciated.
And we're looking forward, we were just joking earlier about, we're going to have a mayor webcam coming soon, where you're just going to have a camera on you all the time and wherever you go. So, anyway, maybe that's too far. But anyway, I just really appreciate all the communication that we, that you all get out.
Before I go to Peggy, I have to announce, in the first time in six years, Keith takes the show. You win.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Bayways. I think that, I think it's really, really neat. And I think for our area, we still might want to talk to North Beach to sort of consolidate some data in case coming to our area is more interesting, if they say, well, you know, you're too small, that we can say, you know, how many tourists we have, how many tourists they have, and the different facilities between the towns to bring people to this section, in case, you know, our competitors are all larger towns. So, we might want to think about doing that in preparation.
That, that time will come. I've already chatted with, that will come. You know, that's, that's going to happen, that conversation.
Cool. Great. And I just had a question. Is there any, any moves forward for Connie's successor? Oh, good. All right.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any eyes have it? Thank you, everybody. Good night. Thank you, Todd.
Hope you feel better, Greg.
Get well, buddy. I had the over-under at 9:30 because we, because we had so much on here, you know. And I was pleasantly surprised to lose that bet.
I was shocked to see Marsha and Tammy.